They call this meeting order. So first of all, we have Joe Eagle, the director of Fairfield County Health. He's at Fairfield County Health Commission. And Joe's going to tell us what's going on ahead of his world.
He's lovely there.
Clearly, it's going to be boring, you know, they should have.
They heard you got such a great presentation.
Yep, so I'm the health commissioner. I've been here now just three years. And then came here. Time has flown, but if you think back three years ago, in April of 2021, we were still lining people up outside of the mall waiting for their COVID vaccines. So we've come along a long way since then. A little overview of the health department in general. We have a five-member board of health, which are made up of community members. Our board president is Brian Oliver. We have Dr. Michelle Maroni is on there, Dr. Teresa Wood, we have Peter Childers, Dr. Alan Shaw. That's five. And we have about 40 employees that work at the health department. The. Things. Our main office is out on Sheridan Drive. You know, about 15,000 square feet in that facility that we currently occupy. And then we also have some space up at Pickers Canyon, here in the violent township on Blessing Road, where we have WIC clinics twice a week in that building and immunization clinic once a month just to serve that growing part of the county. The services we provide are kind of broken up into five divisions. Environmental health, which is my background coming up in public health. And that one is, you know, restaurant inspections, you know, all the food service stuff, sewage, water, rabies control, solid waste, nuisance, campgrounds, swimming pools, home parks, schools, mosquito control, all of those, mostly regulatory kind of things that you think of with the health department. Some of those are funded, some are unfunded mandates that we have to do. You know, like the school inspections and rabies control and things like that. Our nursing division does public health nursing, which is, you know, childhood and adult immunizations. Obviously, been doing a lot of COVID vaccines over the last few years. We do flu shots, including going out to a lot of employers and schools and holding onsite clinics. And then all the routine vaccinations, which will soon be kicking into high gear for back-to-school vaccine season. And we also do our Children's Medical Handicaps Program to help families who have children with qualifying needs. We do communicable disease control. We have a full-time nurse just to vote to that, including tuberculosis control. We're the TB control agency for the area. We do, we work with Helping Grow to do newborn home business, for screenings for people coming into that program. And we've also just started a newborn nurse home visiting program to go out and try to meet with new moms, assess the baby, make sure it's healthy, make sure mom's doing well, screen for depression, make referrals, programs, the services. So that's an exciting new program. And then WIC, I mentioned, a lot of people know about WIC, but it's really, you know, kind of from pregnancy through the fifth, until the child turns five. So it's supplemental food packages. You know, the biggest financial piece is usually if they're using formula because that's expensive. So it's important for that. But also there's healthy foods that they're eligible for. We also require them to come in and do nutrition education. And we have Harber's Market coupons that we pass out every year that really help get people out to those markets. We have our health promotion and prepared, or kind of planning and preparedness division. And that's all of our health educators, which we grow since I've been there. We didn't have any when I got there. We have, I think, four right now. We also have the full-time epidemiologists for looking at disease rates and analyzing trends. So that we do our public health emergency preparedness program as part of that. Save things in health promotion like Healthy Eating Active Living. It's a program of tobacco prevention, safe communities, traffic safety, injury prevention, Project Dawn for overdose and melaxone distribution. A lot of this is both our public health accreditation, which is coming up for renewal next year in crips for kids for safe sleep. And then administration, which is what I spend most of my time in, which is HR and fiscal, birth and death certificates, annual child fatality review, all the planning and that part of the work. Last year, some of the highlights was our WIC program, heavy caseload. The state expects us to have less than 1,300 for a county our size. And we were running over 1,500 participants in that program. Our wellness subsidy permits had been running real high and they dropped last year. I think largely because of interest rates. And I think when and if they finally drop the rates again, there's a lot of pent-up demand that people will start moving on projects again. We also scrapped our collection event in Amanda last year at the high school. We're planning one this year as well that we're going to be doing in Thurston, I believe. Trying to get the scrap tires, you know, out of people's yards and out and make sure they don't end up in ditches. We combined, we kind of reorganized and created that health promotion and planning division under one new director level position. And we really worked to get out in the community and attend events and try to be, you know, visible and engaged with the public. Thanks in large part to Mr. Fix, we made it out to almost every time shift in village. And last night I was at the city, making rounds and making sure people are aware of you. Our funding, you know, we're trying to diversify its funding. So, you know, if it's a down year for permits that, you know, we can weather that or, you know, we lose a grant, we can weather that. About 40% of our funding comes from grants. And 30% comes from licenses and permits and fees for services like immunizations. And then we get 14% of our funding from the townships and villages from property taxes. And then we get a contract with Lancaster. And then unfortunately, the state provides us a whopping 2% of our budget. You know anyone in the state? Just know. Some of the grants we have, the biggest one last year was our WIC grant. So we saw some COVID-19 funding coming through. Water pollution control loan fund, that's our environmental health division. That one alone with our Healthy Aging Grant, we're able to provide funding to help replace or repair failing sewage systems for people who income qualify. So even though it's a loan fund, it's really a forgiveness loan where they don't have to pay it back. We get money for emergency preparedness. We have a workforce development grant for staff training and calling some staff positions that we wouldn't have otherwise. Tobacco prevention, drug overdose prevention, kids for crips for safe sleep, unvaccinated, Healthy Eating Active Living, medical reserve board. And there's so much that I'm missing on that. And for this year, we already have some new grants. There's a COVID funding we obtained, since the COVID vaccines aren't provided free anymore for uninsured adults, we have funding so that we can go out and provide those vaccines. We've been working on identifying uninsured adults in the community and making sure that they have access to that. That Healthy Aging Grant, I mentioned that the county approved. We've already spent part of that on replacing one failing sewage system. And we have other ones that, as the soils dry up enough, that we'll be getting some of those systems replaced with that funding. We've taken over the Safe Communities Traffic Safety Program and a number of other grants that we're doing. And we're anticipating receiving some mosquito control funding this year as well.
Joe, can I interject real quick? Just want to say thanks for your help there on the State Communities Grant. And I'd see the folks there nodding in the back, their appreciation as well. I think you'll be able to do great things with that. It was formerly with council, still is technically, they're the sub-grant teams. But thank you for stepping up and making sure that that was fulfilled.
Yes, happy to do it. It certainly falls in line with, you know, helping people live long, safe, healthy lives. That's really our goal.
And was that previously with the health department? So it kind of makes sense to circle back.
Years back. It had started, had been with the health department and then at some point, for some reason, they let it go. So we've been just rebuilding largely since I've got there. One of the new things we're doing is through that Healthy Eating Grant. We're putting in a community garden that's at the Lancaster campgrounds. So people can rent a plot if they don't have, you know, laid it their own, that they can have a little garden. So we're excited about that. And we're working to launch this newborn home visiting program. And we've started that. Like a lot of places struggling to find nurses to hire, we just got one that's going to be starting soon. So. And then we were able to digitize, scan in all of our middle records, all the health permits, sewage permits, plumbing permits, you know, for all those years. And now they're available, our staff can pull them up in the field or wherever they are and email the stuff to people that say, I don't know where my subject tank is. We can hopefully send them a drawing. And especially if you're buying a home, you're having a real estate inspection or something done, that's big help to be able to say, well, just pull up the, give those records and see what we have. That was my head overview of what's going on. Any questions?
Couple of questions, actually. So obviously, we're getting. They've been doing mosquito seed. Is there anything in Pickford we need to watch out for right now?
Well, it's still early. I mean, I think that we had a mild winter, so that usually means that mosquitoes are out earlier because more of them will survive. Most of the mosquitoes we see, you know, hatch from eggs over late last year. So when we get a lot of rains and that, you know, that lets them hatch out. But if it doesn't get pulled enough, then there's a lot of them that are just out right away. So we don't usually start spraying until around the first of June. We have to start a little earlier if there's a lot of them out there already. We've already got contracts coming in from a lot of the township or a lot of the villages to do their mosquito spraying for this season.
So the second question is, I understand there's been kind of not necessarily here, but an uptick in some of the diseases that have been controlled, like measles and tuberculosis, that sort of thing. What are you seeing in that part?
Well, measles, Ohio had an outbreak over around Dayton, so we were keeping a close eye on that. We have one a year or so ago that was kind of linked over to Children's Hospital and somebody who was affected going in there and then being in the waiting room. And we had a lot of kids that have to keep track of. TB, we see a lot of it coming from other countries that people immigrated from that where it's more common. So we do have cases in, if people can't afford to buy, you know, don't have health insurance, can't afford treatment for TB, then we are required, the county in the end is required to pay for the inpatient care for those individuals. But with the, with the hope, if you can keep them off, you know, on the edge of eyes and off the street, that affects the rest of the community.
Mr. Fix? Yeah, I don't have any questions. I think this might be the third time I've seen this presentation, but I'll say here what I've said in other places. And that is that I'm grateful that three years ago, we found you and the changes that you've made in the health department, how it's operated and all the different things that your department is now doing that weren't being done or weren't being done effectively in the past are greatly appreciated by this county.
I've enjoyed it. Time flies, it seems like. I'm sure if I took a snapshot three years ago and a snapshot today to compare, it would be a lot more evident of what we've been able to accomplish.
Mr. Davis?
I don't. I had the opportunity to see Joe last night. We were both at Lancaster City Council for this same or similar presentation. Happy to see it again.
Very good.
So.
Thanks, Joe.
Bart, you have a quarterly question up?
Hello, good morning, everyone. It's hard to believe we're here at the first quarter's budget review. Time's flying, there's a lot going on. So I will keep things moving myself and get this presentation going. All right. As we move on to the presentation, we'll be reviewing the first quarter's presentation, looking at the financial analysis reporting, general fund revenue, expenses, touching bases on those. We'll also touch base on the sales tax and where we're at with that, as well as a quick discussion about the 2025 budgets. Moving on to the financial forecast, this chart represents our forecast for 2024 with actuals, January through March, and a forecast from April through December. Revenue is currently forecasted around $64.4 million, with the expenses being forecasted somewhere around $63.8 million. Our total revenue versus expenses is currently being projected $639,000 to the good at this time. Our current carryover cash is projected at about $372,000, out of $39.3 million in 2023, and then up to $39.7 million in 2024. We're reviewing more of these details than raw in this presentation. As you can see from the first chart here, our timing for revenue changed just slightly in 2024 as our first half settlements processed in April versus March, as they had in the last two years. I am working down these revenues in two different sections this quarter. One of those is a current view as well as an adjusted view, just to kind of get two views of what they look based upon this timing. The overall revenue is on track for this year in the first quarter of 2024. And our expenses are also continue to show year-over-year consistency so far in 2024. When you see the expense line item down there below, the expenses showing a spike in December, I just wanted to call that out. That spike is where we're holding expenses till later in the year because these are things that timing, we can't really predict in the timing against some of those expenses. So we're holding those in December. As those things expense throughout the year, this number will adjust. We continue to monitor our finances by analyzing our actuals to date and our estimated forecast to ensure we're staying within our target and within our financial goals. As I stated earlier, our county capital management may go heavily at $39.7 million in the first quarter. And we will continue to monitor the cash balance as we know more about the impacts as our revenue and expenses process throughout the year. Now let's move on to the first quarter revenue results. Before I discuss the 2024 revenue results, I'm going to again provide explanations to revenue categories. This chart is created to help everyone understand and see what's included in these. We currently have 96 expense line items, which are summarized into 10 different categories. These next flu size represent the current revenue view, which is matches the financial system we currently have. And like I said, we have two different views here because of the timing issue. The current revenue shows a drop of $7.8 million of Q1, but this is just a timing issue and it does adjust in April of this year. So just call out that's just a timing issue. And we'll discuss that in the adjusted side of the presentation. This chart also represents a timing issue. It kind of shows the sales taxes, the leading revenue item coming in this year. But again, this is just a timing issue and we'll address that just in a little bit. As we move on to the current view, the current view revenue highlights, I won't spend a lot of time reviewing these line items because of the timing issue. But I did want to highlight one item, which would be our investment earnings. The actuals coming in at $2.8 million for the first quarter is $1.3 million higher than last year in 2023. In regards to revenue decreases, these are also some timing issues, so I won't really go into details of that.
Can we touch on investment revenue for a minute?
Yes, sir.
So Bart and I had a meeting this morning and one of the issues that we were discussing is in the five-year out, which is our operational planning document from a fiscal standpoint, we have investment revenue, investment earnings still at 6.4, consistent with the current official estimate. In the 10-year out that you requested, Dr. Brown, he and I talked about that and we changed that to eight. That's not our planning document. Our planning document will remain consistent with the auditor's office. The 10-year document is something we're not going to use as our planning document or our forecast. I just don't have confidence in years six through 10. Saying I have confidence in years one through five is a little bit of a stretch because even that is difficult. So when we get into the six to 10 range, I just feel like we're spitting at it. But in that discussion about the 10-year out, when Bart initially brought it to me, it had the 6.4 in there on investment revenue. After a discussion, we changed it to 8.0. The theory of that change wasn't to change our underlying five-year planning document, but just to try to make the 10-year out a little more accurate. In saying that, I think eight is also inaccurate. It's just less inaccurate than 6.4. You know, if I were pinned against a wall and made to pick an over-under number, it'd be 10. I truly believe 10 is a floor, even if the Fed cuts rates this year because we are going to offset those rate cuts if they occur with the reinvestment improvements we make going from roughly 1.2 to somewhere north of 4, even assuming the rate cut. So, you know, we all know what the investment revenue is when it actually occurs. But I just wanted to make sure, I guess, you understood why was that changed and what was the thinking there? And the thinking was just, there's a real number that we have a tremendous amount of confidence in, and we thought it made the 10-year out a little more accurate, even though I still think eight is probably not the number.
I think just having the discussion is very good. And even the continued discussion from the Investment Advisory Committee meeting, someday it'll matter more than it matters now because of the carryover cash. And I too believe the actual estimate is probably closer to 10 million. But in paying respect to the treasurer, we'll make that adjustment later on.
And I don't disagree with that, particularly in this situation where the early read on sales tax is a little soft. I'm not sure that's how that's going to play out when we get more data on that. But there's a lot of moving parts there and bundling those moving parts in a later adjustment makes a lot of sense to me. But I said, that's why the 10-year outlook's different than the five-year.
Okay, thank you.
Please proceed.
Yes, sir. We'll move on then to the adjusted revenues. Again, these numbers here are showing, taking into consideration the timing associated with it. And I've adjusted some of those in, like for example, upward property tax up to adjust these to make them more comparable year-over-year as far as the first, the first quarter. This view, this view shows revenue slightly increasing about $582,000 year-over-year. As we discussed earlier, the investment earnings was the big driver, the big positive, and the impact of going up about $1.3 million. And again, I wanted to thank everybody, the commissioners, investment advisory council, trade repots, and everybody's input in that. And it shows the success that all of you have had and your thoughts on the investments and how long we're doing on those today. So thank you. As we move on to the 2024 quarter one percentage of adjusted total revenues by category results, and the sales tax and property tax both come in around 35%. In prior years, it's averaging about 39% for sales tax and property tax was averaging about 35%. The lower mix associated with this, the result of investment earnings being up 13% versus normally a 3% of the total overall revenue. So investment earnings is driving that up, driving the other ones down. But it's just the, it's just the mix associated with those revenue funds. Moving on to the adjusted revenue highlights, the 2024 quarter one revenue is estimated at $21.9 million, which is a prior year $21.3 million. That equates, as I said before, about $582,000 higher than previous year. And that increase is a result of, like we said earlier, investment earnings up $1.3 million. Property tax is up around $160,000. And convenience and casino is slightly up as well. Estimated decreases are a result of fees and charges for services, which are down $199,000. However, that could be also a little bit of a timing issue. Sales tax is down $174,000. That is a true number, being down $174,000, as well as jail ground is down. And small reduction in the local government title surplus in Homestead is projected right now. Many of the numbers are anticipated to the right size in the second quarter as we, as those timing issues go away with the, with the next quarter. As we move on to discuss the sales tax rate, Fairfield County has had one of the lowest sales tax rates in the state of Ohio. Out of the 88 counties, 80% of the counties are higher than Fairfield County, where 15% have the same 6.75% sales tax rate in Fairfield County. Only five counties, or 5% of four counties have a lower sales tax rate than Fairfield County. As we move on to the sales tax, it has leveled it off over the first quarter of 2024 versus 2023 results, being down $174,000 year-over-year. The drop in sales tax is mainly driven by lower auto sales tax, as auto sales tax is down 12.3% year-over-year, and non-auto sales tax is down 0.5% in 2024. We will continue to monitor the sales tax in the second quarter and work with the auditor's office to make adjustments as needed. Now, as we move on to the first quarter expenses for 2024, this slide represents the expense categories. We currently have 674 expense line items and have categorized those into seven different categories. The 2024 quarter one expenses increased from, increased at estimated $691,000. The increases were driven by contract and personal services, but were offset by lower outline this year. And I'll explain more of these, explain these details a little bit later here. This chart shows the personnel services are coming in at 29%, which is our highest overall expense for the county. And it is consistent with 2023. So we don't see much consistent, or much change between 2023 and 2024 at this time. The Q1 expenses are now estimated $77 million, which is higher than $17 million the previous year, about 4.1%. The contract service increases were $498,000, driven by contract services in the shares department as they were, as we were investing in the county 911 system, as well as body camera services. We also had some increases in the facilities as we increased in the first quarter as verity technology and engineering services were added in 2024 that were not part of 2023. We also had some increases in personnel services of $237,000 and an increase in the drove supplies of about $194,000. Part of that is timing, part of it is not. Our last slide here, we're going to talk about the 2025 budgets. We have scheduled all the 2025 budgets as been put out. The budget hearing is scheduled for the rest of this year. And we have departmental meetings that are going to be held from April through June of this year. So if anybody out there has not been sent for a meeting and wants to have me, please get with us and make sure you get that on the calendar for you. Questions?
I don't. Bart and I try to stay in touch on some of these issues. I'm not going to pretend to understand it as well as he does, but at 30,000 feet, I got it.
Thank you, Fitz. Yeah, Bart and I also get to spend some time together and he's created some of the graphs and reports that are very helpful to me and I appreciate that. I feel like we continue to be in a really incredibly strong financial position, so thank you, Bart.
Bart and I have also met and I'm quite familiar with all these numbers. So, thank you for your good work.
Sure.
So at this time, we will open a public hearing regarding the adoption of roadway design manual for the unincorporated areas of Fairfield County. Mitch, if you come down, please.
Level of excitement in the room is palpable.
So Mitch, if you could, first of all, tell us what this is all about.
Yep. So I think it's been several months since I was here. Last time it was about the stormwater design manual. At the center of all this was we are working through the Fairfield County subdivision regulations revision. And this is the pulling out of all of the technical data that was integrated into the subdivision regulations and creating basically design manuals separately from the subdivision regulations. And so we worked through the stormwater design manual that's been multiple months that that was passed and has been implemented and we're utilizing that manual today. This is the final piece of that, which is the roadway design manual. So this is the technical part of that that we pulled out of the subdivision regulations. Holly and I with Hollywood Regional Planning is working on that currently and about ready to start go through the public hearing process, through the higher vice code process that requires, required that. Anyhow, so here we are with the roadway design manual and a little bit of history on that. So we had the same consultant that was working on the stormwater design manual, working on the roadway design manual. We had a little bit of a snap due in the process of that. The firm that we were using had a lot of turnover and so there were some things that were getting missed. So the county engineers office took that over. We finished the manual. We're ready. It's ready to be implemented, so we're at that stage. Here we are. So.
So I'll ask the question, is there anyone here who is a proponent of this new roadway design manual? Holly, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, I think it's a great step in the right direction and I think that will make it easier for developers to be able to speak for the guidance. Whereas if they need to do a variance to a center line of a road for a little bit, tiny little bit, it would take a whole problem for regional planning where now the engineer's office can look at it. Give a set and give a divine exception to that. So that's going to make it easier on that. I also think just having them as separate manuals provides more guidance to everybody. So I think it's going to help streamline the process.
Is there anyone else here who is a proponent of this manual? Is there anyone who's an opponent of the manual? Anyone who would just like to make a comment? Please.
So I just want to thank Mitch and the engineers office. You know, we set out several years ago to try to make Fairfield County a reasonable place for developers to come and do business. And, you know, their ask has always been that, you know, just that the rules are clear and that we all play by the rules. And having that in place, having those rules in place and clearly understood allows them to figure out if they want to invest here or not. So, you know, the stormwater manual that you've done, this work that you've done, the work that Holly's doing, all goes into making it easier for them to understand what the requirements are and easier for them to decide if they want to do business here or not. So I do appreciate all the effort that you guys have put into this.
I will tag on to that and I appreciate that comment. So, and your leadership with the comprehensive plan because we did integrate certain things in the comprehensive plan that are in this manual as well. Specifically as we talk about thoroughfare plans and how that integrates into right-of-way dedication along roads and how, how those things play in one another in more developing areas versus maybe in more rural areas. So all those things have been trying to, you have a bunch of manuals that talk to one another. A lot of that coordination is sometimes gets missed, so we try to make that work in here. And I will say, there's always going to be a work in progress. We most likely will be in front of you again to maybe do updates for these manuals. There's one particularly in the stormwater manual that I already know that needs to get a little bit more tweaked. So that's, that's a call.
Any additional comments? This hearing is closed. Thank you. So we, so we set aside this time for public comment. If you wish to do so, please approach the podium, give your name and address and you will be limited to three minutes. Would like to be first?
Morning. Sherry Kaimer, 3464 South Bank Road. All attention. At last week's meeting, I made a comment at the very tail end of the meeting and some of the people online may not have heard that. So I'm just going to repeat that. When Commissioner Fix brought up the 13 townships, the resolution for, to declare the 13 townships as exclusionary zones for large-scale solar, which is 50 megawatts and above. You know, he made a comment that be careful what you wish for. And my comment clear at the end was, we can control the development through zoning. And so the counties, the townships, the people have real input and solar doesn't have to go through zoning. The big solar does not have to go through zoning, so that's a critical component in that. And also it's, I think, critical in our new land use plan, which is great. And the townships and the villages and the towns are, I think, really, you know, starting to really come around to that and looking forward to that and it's really helping them. But I, you know, when I showed them out last week, Thurston has two big chunks on each side. And it's like, if they want to expand, what, you know, what are they going to do? So anyway, and I also noticed in the, it was brought to my attention that in one of the leases of a large chunk of land, there is an amendment to one of the leases and there's a carve-out as an option to purchase. So what is going to be so bad there is that maybe a future battery storage that is in their plan, but they say it's not in their plan, but it really is. So we don't know what's going to happen there, where maybe after the 30 years, that land is going to be totally unusable. We don't know. So anyway, I just wanted to bring up those points and looking forward to the May 21st hearing and encourage everybody to be at the hearing at, well, here at 10:30, correct?
Scott here.
Oh, I'm, that's right. It's at the Liberty Center. The Liberty Center. Thank you.
Would like to be next, please?
Hi, I'm Joe Price, 155 St. Rose, the first township. And I'm here today under half the Stevens. Pray, requested that somebody pray that T Camp will be here and see if the loss is left away to Jesus. So if you just take a moment to bow your head, first of all, to remember what selfless people they have been. They have always been here for our county, our state and United States. So please keep them in your heart today as well as their feeling. And I hope we all raise ourselves to better people because of their selflessness and their striving to do the best for everyone. So bow your heads for a second. Dear Jesus, please be with all of us today to make wise decisions, to do the best always for everyone, not self-interest. And please help us remember that people who came before us that made this country great and in your sense that is named and prayed.
Would like to be next, please?
Morning. Commissioner's Council. Acting like Sardine up there, but appreciate you allowing me and I'll.
Your name and address.
Sure. My name is Jeremy Walsh. I live at 3331 East Augusta Drive in McConnellsville, Ohio. I don't live in Fairfield County, but I work here. I'm a business representative with the carpenters union. I specialize in renewable energy and I wanted to take an opportunity to talk to you guys for just a few minutes. One of my members, concerned members, sent me a flyer that they received in the mail. Been in renewable energy for over five years now, seeing a lot of these. A lot of counties are putting these out. My advice is these are full of half-truths. Please do some research on these to find out what these can bring to your county. We've worked with a lot of different developers in the state of Ohio. I represent Ohio, Indiana and Kentucky, over 200 members who live here in Fairfield County, who look at these projects as a good opportunity for work. They provide a source of income for the farmers who own this land, who's paid taxes on this land, who may don't want to farm anymore, who physically can't farm anymore. This is, it provides a tax base income for the county that would help provide services for everybody who lives here. So before you make any decisions on farms that come to your county, I just ask that you do the full research on them and make sure that they, they, you know, you know exactly what they're bringing or offering to your county. Okay? Thank you.
Would like to be next, please?
Morning. My name's Trent Spocket. I live at 2909 Beaufort Avenue, Washington Township in Southern County. Just like Jeremy, I was just out there also worked for the Central Midwest Regional Council of Carpenters. Like he said, I'll kind of reiterate a little bit of that, but it's a little bit different. We do represent about 200 members that live in Fairfield County that show up and go to work every day. Big thing is with a lot of these solar projects, just like he said, a lot of the stuff that's out there, you guys need to do your research, find out what the truths are and what the truths aren't. For us, the reason why we're so involved in these renewable projects is it is good clean energy and it does provide good paid jobs for our members, not to count the tax, the tax revenue that you guys get back during the life of these projects. A lot of our members that live here in Fairfield County, they spend a good day of their time traveling back and forth every day because Columbus is a huge city with a lot of projects ongoing. And surrounding Columbus is where I remember to go. Counties are able to have projects that is managed to come to the area. It's good work. It can be worth six months to a year's worth of work. And so I tell people, a lot of these meetings we go to, people are in opposition on the same that they're just temporary jobs. One thing that I tell everybody is every construction job is a temporary job. Once the job is done, it's done. They go on to the next project. The area that I'm more concentrated in, more of Southern Ohio, we've had a few larger scale solar projects come to those areas. I've been able to watch the school districts flourish from the extra income that they receive from the paying a little taxes. Not to mention the workforce that is from those areas not having to travel two, two-plus hours on way back and forth to work. So when the time comes, I hope you guys do your homework, do your research and you guys, what's the green energy that's coming from this area? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last chance, anyone else? Thank you all for coming. Austin, you're all by yourself today, buddy.
Yeah, yes, no legal update.
Thank you. How do you build a speech update on it?
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Just want to give a special shout out to Bailey Levens from the Health Department. I missed that one. You were up there, Joe. She's been very helpful to a number of things in County, so appreciate her. And I know she's doing good things for you as well. So next Tuesday, we will be at Wagnalls Memorial Library there in their community group space for an evening meeting that begins at 7:00 PM. We will have a listen and learn from the gate pad. The folks that own that particular business are putting on a special, pretty big event coming this summer. So they're going to share with us what they're doing there in that particular space. Highlights and resolutions. Review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals and we do have 35 resolutions on the agenda for voting today. There is a resolution amending our regular review and special meetings resolution there. We are adding the, not May 5th, the special meeting for the solar exclusionary zones for May 21st, I believe. I want to check this date. Sorry, I have the wrong date in here and I don't want to give you the incorrect one. Yes, May 21st, that special meeting date will be added to that and location being Liberty Center. So you'll see that on the agenda for today. We also have a resolution reappointing Jeremiah Up and Erica Crady to the OPWC Integrating Committee. Two resolutions regarding the Walnut 05 Geiger Road superstructure replacement. One is to approve the contract with US Bridge and doing business at Ohio Bridge. And the other resolution is for the notice to commence. Mitch, you want to add anything on that one? Yeah, good deal. We also have a resolution for an agreement between the commissioners and the Fairfield County Park District. And this is for loan for contractual services related to a grant that they've received for Glaciers Wetland Restoration Project. So this would enable them to be able to have funds to do the work they need to do on this particular grant as it is a reimbursing grant. They don't expect to need to access this, but we wanted to have this in place in case that was something that they did need to do. Also have a resolution for regional planning to approve a contract with a bioconstruction company for the CDBG Village of Pleasantville Street Storm Sewer Improvement Project. And also two resolutions from the South Hampton subdivision. Holly, you want to add anything on those?
No, well, I guess the CDBG. And then subdivision projects.
Thank you. And utilities has filled up the review packet today. So we do have a resolution there to sign an agreement with Bennett and Williams for professional geotechnical services. We are appropriating some ARP projects there. And that's for the Valley Force Main Project as well as the Tucson Road Water Reclamation Facility Junction Chamber. Tony, anything on that?
Financial ones that are beyond or transferring funds. Tucson Road Junction Chamber, Forest Main, the regional lift station up there. That is for geotechnical services, our wealth and also.
And I think, Tony, you had shared recently that you were participating in a webinar, an actual event where folks were talking about planning or identifying where sources of water were. And folks were maybe behind in that and we've been trying to do some work on that to be prepared.
Correct. This contract that we're signing today, Orpseke and Ohio DA is having a meeting Thursday discuss water in the regional area, what we have. That's what, there it is. Don't know much more than that. Don't know more, much more than that. And that's kind of the. Thanks for my, thanks for your time.
Well, thank you for being at the forefront of that, Tony, appreciate it. All right, Bart, budget review. You got an update on sales tax for us?
Yes, I just gave you an update on the first quarter sales tax, but we did receive sales tax for April, so I have updated these numbers. Uh, we currently are down about two percent year over year for sales tax, about two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. However, my model goes out and models things out and it shows that we're pretty much right on plan for sales tax, uh, with the projections, so I think you're still looking pretty, pretty good for sales tax.
Thank you very much. Any questions on that, Commissioners? Okay. Moving on, calendar review and invitations received, Rochelle.
Thank you. The Hicks Partners in Fairfield County Matt discussion is this Thursday, April twenty-fifth at ten E M. And an invitation was received for the Elder Abuse Awareness Breakfast on June twelfth at eight E M. at the Life Church Vineyard in Pleasantville. The Commissioners received the following correspondence. A press release from the Lancaster Fairfield County Chamber Awards and Annual Fringe Show titled Lancaster Fairfield County Chamber of Commerce to Celebrate the Stars of Our Community on May ninth. A thank you card from J F S staff was received. A press release from the Auditor's Office titled Fairfield County Awarded Government Finance Officer Association Award for Outstanding Achievement and Popular Annual Financial Reporting. A press release from the Ohio Department, uh, from the Health Department titled Four Traffic Fatalities in Quarter One of Twenty Twenty-four in Fairfield County. Correspondence Regarding Industrial Solar Projects. A letter from the Health Department Regarding Mosquito Control. An April eighteenth article in the Lancaster Eagle Gazette titled County Commissioners to Host Special Meeting on Solar Fields on May twenty-first at Liberty Center. From the Hunter's Run Conservancy District, a letter regarding readjustment of appraisal benefits, a notice of key information about the assessment, an informational letter, and frequently asked question sheet. A memo from Dr. Carrie Brown regarding a hotel motel lodging tax update, the Auditor's wins of the week, and two newsletters, one from M C J V C and the other from the Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities. That is it.
Thank you, Rochelle. And just a note there on Hunter's Run Conservancy District, uh, so Lindy Jackson will be coming on May seventh, uh, just to provide an update on that assessment process and how it's moving forward. That's all, Commissioner.
Commissioner Davis, a couple of things. Anni and Rick and I all attended Lancaster City Council's meeting last night. Um, there was, there were several pieces of legislation on the agenda, uh, regarding the potential transfer of transit from the city to the county. In the end, all of the companion pieces of legislation passed ten to zero. Uh, the only dispute that arose last night is there were an effort by some, uh, to delay negotiating the M O U by another two weeks and by not suspending that legislation and passing it immediately. Uh, that was resolved, it was an eight-two vote, uh, with, uh, council people, um, schoon over and, um, who closing, uh, that expedient issue. But the other eight were there and I think we're on a pretty good path. I think there are still, um, a couple of little pockets within the city of folks who would like to frustrate this transaction, uh, but I don't think they have, uh, enough oars in the water to stop it. Staying under old business, actually really old business, uh, I just wanted to mention that Stephanie Taylor has a birthday coming up. We appreciate you very much, hope you enjoy your birthday very much. That's all I have for business.
And really old business.
I don't have many old businesses, thank you.
So, uh, along the same lines as, as Commissioner Davis talked about transportation, part of our workforce, uh, board, we have a committee that deals with public benefits and the benefit cliff, if you will. And one of the main topics of discussion had to do with transportation and being a roadblock for those less fortunate, if you will, those, uh, that don't have, uh, many resources to be able to, uh, acquire and, and get to a job. So that, that was, that's one of the main topics that we, uh, that was in our discussion yesterday, so. And I, I would expect, uh, more good news in the future as we, as we take charge of, uh, transportation for Fairfield County, being able to provide some of those, uh, things that folks need. New business, uh, Commissioner Davis. Just briefly, um, County Administrator Cordo and I will attend the Lancaster City School Board Meeting, uh, this afternoon at four-thirty. Uh, I think they just wanted an opportunity, uh, to express their appreciation, uh, for the driver's ed vehicle that we were able to help them with. And, um, you know, some of you folks may or may not have recall some of the statistics, but one of the things that we're thinking about on transit is, you know, my generation ran out and got their license as soon as we could. I'm sixty years old. Um, and couldn't wait to get our car, truck and couldn't wait to get to that first job and make a couple bucks and we could have a little something in our pocket. Um, the, the current generation is viewing that very differently. Um, they're hanging out in the low forty percentile of young people who are getting their license at all. Um, and there are a lot of reasons for that. Uh, there, there's probably some social changes going on that, that I wouldn't necessarily be in tune with, but there's also the price, uh, the cost of going through the, the schooling to get your driver's license, the cost of getting a vehicle, the cost of insurance, the cost of gas, all that stuff is crazy right now. And I think that's a factor in why the number of young people getting their driver's license has been more than cut and half. So when we got the opportunity to be of assistance to Lancaster City Schools and Fairfield Union Schools and try to help them restart a driver's ed program that they haven't had for quite some time, we thought that was a good thing. Uh, give these young folks a little maybe better chance at, at getting that license if they want to, if cost is the impediment, we could be helpful on that. Um, but at the end of the day, we're hearing from, still hearing from a tremendous number of employers that they're having trouble finding employees. Um, and if they do find employees, they're having trouble getting those employees to work. Um, and so what we can do to facilitate, um, uh, these, these young people having the best chance they can to succeed, uh, with what they want to do, not forcing anybody to make choices, but I just think that's incredibly shocking statistic that less than half of the people who are eligible to get their driver's license at a young age are doing that. Um, and so that's what we're going to do this afternoon. I'm sure my colleagues will be welcome there as well. Uh, but whether you're there or not, we will be sure to, uh, make sure that the, the board knows that it, it, it took us all, uh, to accomplish that for them. Thank you, Mr. President.
In addition to that, Commissioner Davis, um, as you mentioned, Fairfield Union was one of the other schools where we were able to purchase a vehicle, uh, for their program as well as Lancaster City Schools. They are also advertising that their program is up and running as well. Anything else, Rick, on that?
Well, we're working on solutions for the rest of the county, uh, schools and, uh, we've seen a hundred and some thousand dollar grant for the E S C to, uh, launch something a little different, uh, what Fairfield Union Lancaster Schools are doing is, uh, they partnered with, uh, Miss King of Valley E S C, they already have a program up and running, so they're up and moving, but from a cost effectiveness standpoint, they're looking at partnering with somebody else to serve the rest of the schools. Well, I'm, uh, uh, two different paths, so it'll be interesting.
If I might, one more thing, Mr. President, for folks out there thinking, you know, all this isn't a big deal, it's only, you know, six, seven hundred bucks to go through that process, well, good on you for having six, seven hundred bucks in your pocket and these kids don't. Thank you.
And the other impediment, sorry, Commissioner, is the, uh, the capacity for, um, these drivers at places, there's a waiting list. It is even if you have the money and have the desire, you're going to wait.
These partners are very unique and, uh, they have two stereotypes.
Right.
I, I feel like I should state for the record that I'm from a different generation than Commissioner Davis, but I too. Got my heart and chest and tried to win. That's really old business.
That's hard.
Scared too.
Now you're just so poor.
He was poor, I get it.
So, uh, anything, uh, from our public officials, um, or anything else you'd like to have?
Oh, just thanks for your support, Lisa.
Last Tuesday, I was not here. I was attending the High Records Association Continuing Education. Yes, a very valuable discussions on some legislation and another topic of discussion was the attorneys, um, that are trying to incorporate multiple documents into one document, so they're masking some of the opportunities that are out there. So let's just say they're putting on a mortgage with, um, two or three other things included in that mortgage that should actually be filed separately. Um, and so we are trying to navigate how we want to proceed with that. I've had some discussion with Stephen Darnell about that. And then also I just want to thank Stephen, he helped, um, go through the process with me. Uh, we had a, um, lease agreement that had never gotten filed for one of our entities, our county entities and, um, well, township entities. And, um, unfortunately, we were not able to come to a, a, an agreement upon or a conclusion upon what they could do to make this lease stand as it is. Um, did give them an option, um, but I'm not sure that they're going to be able to go through with that just because of the, the other party, the lesser, um, where they're standing right now as far as health. So, um, I do appreciate, um, Prosecutor's Office being available to us to work through that process and make sure that we are doing the right thing on our end and trying to be as helpful as possible to maybe guide them into another direction.
I'm thinking about the transit, transition. Um, Bennett reached out to Nick and G I S and had mentioned there was a need for some G I S services, so we have a meeting with the Lancaster G I S to learn more about that process and understand what that overlay requirements might be. So we'll report more on that as we learn more about that. Lots of conversations about the state, about hotel motel lodging tax. Many other counties are grappling with how to define their rules and regulations. We have, um, included short-term housing, but we don't have a permit process. Just wanted to highlight that, put that in a memo in case you ever needed to have that information on a readily basis for some conversations with, um, C C A O or other members relating to that, because it does vary county to county and even from entity to entity in terms of what they want and how much enforcement is occurring. Other conversations that are going on in multiple counties relate to access, stewardship access to a financial transaction system. And there are some requests, not here in Fairfield County, but there are requests for third parties have access to transaction systems and that wouldn't be something that we would do and that's not something others are doing either. Giving presentation to the Mayor's Association last week, it was a very fun presentation. They really enjoyed it. It was actually during a storm and we lost all power, but we kept playing the Jeopardy game because that's what they wanted to do. They put flashlights up so they could keep going. Um, it was a, it was a good presentation, it was nice to connect with those folks. In updating for the Financial Leadership Academy survey, um, we were hoping to have enough for one cohort, we already have more than enough for two and getting feedback about it being a grand idea, particularly from the Corps of Juvenile and Common Police Corps. So we'll, um, continue to work on that and think of ways that we can put that in place for twenty-five. We see tremendously good feedback from three different individuals this week from a customer service perspective, Stacy Knight, Crystal Walker, and Beth Haskins-Sidney. We'll share those in our next week wins, just really good feedback from customers in our customer service survey that we have on the way out of the door. Library sessions are going to begin in Licking County relating to the entrepreneurial program. I mention it because you stay in touch with folks at Licking County. We will also reach out to folks in Fairfield County for that same type of volunteership program, um, that Licking County had requested at first. Looking at the March housing report, you'll be interested to know that housing inventory is up twenty-nine percent compared to twenty-three. That is something that, um, is much needed in terms of housing in the area. Thinking about housing, the Senate report did come out, working this, um, week on some C A A O responses to that. I do see an interesting aspect that's a disincentive for out-of-state landlords in Ohio, disincentive to make sure there's no gouging of the market, if you will, and also making sure landlords are paying attention to local requirements. Congratulations to Kayla Speakman, who is going to be graduating from the Chamber Leadership Program. Congratulations to the O U Celebrate Women Program, which received an inclusivity honor from the Pickerington Chamber. And we mentioned the Popular Annual Financial Report earlier and very much want to say thank you to all of the finance team in terms of that preparation, that report. We want to include more pictures next year. We included more graphs this year. Next year, we want to include more pictures to make it even more interesting for the everyday reader. And then finally, I'm very humbled and excited to report that the, I think it's called the Community Choice Award, the Fairfield County Auditor's Office has listed as the top employer, um, place to work and that's a Community Choice Award that was just announced Sunday this week.
Great, you always have something to say.
Uh, so I wanted to share that, uh, the Ohio Housing Finance Authority, uh, just approved ten, uh, financing for ten developments across the state. One of those is in Lancaster, um, or one of those is in Lancaster. It's called the Emerald Place and it's a two hundred and sixteen unit, um, apartment complex on South Ewing, which will be great for the east industrial park or really needing employees and places for them to live, opposed to, opposed to work. So it abuts actually some, um, industrial land that could be there for potential growth. So it's a nice thing to have housing going up next to potential, uh, business development. Uh, so they got a ten million dollars in housing credits, which is most of the state. Um, this was pushed out by a governor, uh, the line and the thinking is an opportunity to reach out when they do the ribbon cutting. He's been very excited about this, probably be a nice project for, uh, the government's Italian parts of affordable houses. Let's ask if I could share with Commissioner Levy, uh, nudge a little bit, but, uh, with all of the work that, that we're doing on affordable houses, it's a big, big, big way, city.
Very nice.
I touch on that real quick. Just good to hear that we're able to collect some of those dollars because, um, the county records office, fifty percent of our recording fees goes to higher housing trust fund and you calculate that out throughout the state, it's a lot more than ten billion, but to just know that some way we are recouping some of those dollars, usually through grants, but, um, you know, it, it's good to hear that that was another discussion kind of that we were having at our C E. So I, I'm glad to hear that that's going for this project because it certainly needed this community.
Fair Play.
Sir, how you doing this morning?
Just talking about you.
Well, hope it's all good.
So anything you'd like to, we're doing kind of an update right now, anything you'd like to?
Well, we just have a lot of different things going on. We're currently, um, conducting our annual C P T training, continuing professional training and, uh, part of that, one of the things that we're doing today is, uh, Spanish for, basic Spanish for law enforcement. One of our, uh, community response team members has created this curriculum and teaching the class, so it's kind of tailored by her to, uh, any interactions that we may have with, uh, Spanish speakers. So it's kind of tailored by her to any interactions that we may have with Spanish-speaking population. So it's happening live right now and good training. Other than that, just keeping up with all the training requirements. Got some pretty high-profile investigations that are going on right now. Other than that, I don't know what I can say about those, but in the news.
John.
Just happy to report that group's done. Caffling should be coming down.
Yeah, it should be down.
Lower the gas.
Go back to that. Tell us about the new sign.
Your sign at the Liberty Center is up. It's an electronic message sign, so you'll be able to program messages in a loop to advertise whatever you'd want, including a new facade. Oh, yeah. We're not selling advertisements, but internally, you know, important things for the partners that are up in that area and obviously commissioners. So we're happy to see that go up.
Who controls the computer up?
I, I would assume the boss does. I don't know if it opens for interpretation.
It's not you, Dave. I didn't think it was me.
You can share what you would like.
Well, yeah, I'd, I'd ask about, you know, the first message would be Dave Lovey, the best commissioner.
Yeah, I think political advertising is definitely permitted on.
I just think all three of your pictures would be great, just to see. Just no worries, just pictures. And that's, we're capable of that now.
Well, I think we ought to figure out something else.
Just, you know, as the things have been mentioned about the transit transition, the IT Department has been working alongside Aaron, the new director, Rick and his guidance. We've, I believe we're capturing all the things that need to be captured. There's quite a few.
On that note, it has, it is taking a village to transition transit, so appreciate everyone and their work on that. But the piece that, you know, Auditor Brown was speaking to is that on a website that's currently with the city, you can access bus routes with, with the GIS information. So we have been working diligently to get that live on the county's website. It'll stay dark, so to speak, I think is the right phrasing there, until we do take over July 1st. But we want to be able to have things ready to go when that, when we do flip that switch. So thanks to everybody working on that.
You know, again, transportation, I think, has been on Fairfield County's radar for several years. Especially at the, at how it relates to employment. But I think, I think the state has been a little slow getting there, but they're there now. They, they have a keen understanding of how important transportation is part of the equation. You know, yesterday, Corey, or we had the benefits with discussion. And you and I have had that discussion on how difficult this is. Any, any updates? Seeing any improvements in that regard?
Yeah, the Benefit Bridge program, so there's really two components now. One, it's in a pilot phase, but the Benefit Bridge program, they've been going for a couple of years and it's going really well. We've had a number of, actually, the majority of the customers that we had go through that program had continued on to the point where we've been able to move them out of the program because they were making enough. Their wages were sufficient that they no longer needed any type of assistance. So that program has been very successful. And I think right now we have 25, about 25 benefits in that program. So during that time, they're in that program, they can, you can pay for certain things, one-time expenses to help them in that transition from being on public assistance to getting off of public assistance as their wage continues to increase. And also during that time, we provide financial literacy and other types of budgeting classes to help in that process as well. So that program is going very well.
So in Fairfield County being one of the counties in the power program.
Yes, and we're filing that. That's, we're calling that the Workforce Bridge. And that's a partnership with employers where employers can receive a financial incentive if they hire somebody who's currently receiving public assistance. And they provide a training that the employer would lead. And then the training that they receive would allow them to increase the wage of that individual, that staff member to the point where they no longer receive public assistance.
So no pressure, but they're looking to you guys to make this thing work so they can roll without statewide.
Yes, I forwarded a resume this morning for one of the employers who's interested in that. And we're trying to identify additional candidates as well.
So let's.
I just create one going in the, I believe. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on the nation under God, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Just that Bennett Nicewinger is going to read the voting portion for you.
Approval of mandatory April 16, 2000.
Summied.
Second. Discussion.
Just didn't felt like it was on.
Seeing number call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Minutes pass three zero. From the Commissioners, Resolution 2024-04.23.a. A resolution authorizing the approval of a proclamation. Summied.
Second. This guy.
So we have this proclamation. Jeff Porter, if you could step up, carry this. We really appreciate it. It's a proclamation recognizing Jeffrey Porter for receiving a National Public Employer Labor Relations Association Pay Center Award. For Jeffrey Porter, Fairfield County's Deputy County Administrator, was recognized in the National Public Employer Labor Relations Association 2024 Annual Training, and Mr. Porter was elected prestigious recognition due to his outstanding work in Fairfield County's Health Benefit Plan and the Employee Physical and Mental Health Clinics. And Mr. Porter is a trendsetter, developed innovative way to deliver the best health products to employees at great prices to employers and employees, and is enabled modeling these health products to other Ohio counties. Now, therefore, the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners does hereby formally declare its recognition of Mr. Jeffrey Porter for receiving the National Public Employer Labor Relations Association's Pay Center Award for significant work in health benefit plans and employee health clinics and witness wherever. Here we are. Jeffrey, thank you for your award.
Let's go.
Yep, there we go. One, two, three.
Speech.
I'll be speech. Well, I, I, I just never know what to say against something like this. It's really not for me. We have a whole team of people here in Fairfield County who work really hard to make sure our employees have food benefits and that they're healthy and able to serve the citizens of Fairfield County. And three of those people are up here with me right now. They had the vision to move us to a self-funded method for our health insurance. And when we went back and asked to open a clinic and, and do other things, they said yes. So this award really is for everybody here. So thank you.
This guy. Call ball please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Resolution passes three zero. From the Board of Commissioners, Resolution 2024-04.23.b. A resolution approving second amendment of Resolution 2023-11.07.a. Which established the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners 2024 Review Sessions, Regular Meetings, and Special Meeting Dates. Summied.
Second.
Discussion.
Call call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Resolution passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Auditor Payroll, Resolution 2024-04.23.c. A resolution authorizing a memo expense memo receipt for the general fund 2% administration fee for managing a county self-insurance program, fund number 5376 to general number 1001, Fairfield County Auditor. Summied.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Resolution passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities, Resolution 2024-04.23.d. A resolution approving an account-to-account transfer. Summied.
Second.
Discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Resolution passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Board of Elections, Resolution 2024-04.23.e. A resolution to authorize funding made available to Fairfield County Board of Election, a grant for cybersecurity technical assistance and appropriate from unappropriated. Summied.
Second.
This guy.
Call call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Resolution passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Dog Shelter, Resolution 2024-04.23.f. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in major expenditure object categories for fund number 2002. Summied.
Second.
Discussion. Call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Resolution passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution 2024-04.23.g. A resolution to authorize Jeremiah D. Up and Eric McCready to be reappointed to the OPWC Integrating Committee.
New Fairfield County Engineer, move items G, H, I, and J.
Second.
Discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Resolution, resolutions pass three zero. From the Fairfield County Family and Children First Council, Resolution 2024-04.23.k. A resolution approving a sub-grant agreement amendment for the community-based child abuse prevention grant by and between the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners and the Ohio Children's Trust Fund for state fiscal year 2024 and state fiscal year 2025.
New Fairfield County Family and Children First Council, I move items K, L, M, N, and O.
Discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovey? Resolutions pass three zero. From Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2024-04.23.p. A resolution to approve a memo expense memo receipt for the cost of birth certificates paid to Fairfield County Health Departments as a memo expenditure for fund number 2072, Public Children's Services.
For Fairfield County Job and Family Services, I move items P, Q, R, S, and T.
Discussion.
Seeing none, roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Resolutions pass three zero. From Fairfield County Park District, Resolution 2024-04.23.u. A resolution regarding an agreement between the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners and the Fairfield County Park District for a loan for contractual services related to Two Glaciers Wetland Restoration Project and an H2 Ohio statewide wetland grant. Summied.
Second.
Discussion.
Accomplished and just having it in place in case it's needed.
Additional discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Resolution passes three zero. From Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution 2024-04.23.v. A resolution authorizing the approval of a contract agreement by Fairfield County Board of County Commissioners and Enviro Construction Company.
New Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, move items V, W, and X.
Second.
Discussion.
Not related to these specific resolutions, but just again, an appreciation for Holly and the work that she does with regional planning. Unfortunately, SOFA has had to tender her resignation, so Holly is a person down. So appreciate you continuing to, to keep things going and going strong.
Thank you.
Additional discussion. Call ball please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Resolutions pass three zero. From the Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution 2024-04.23.y. A resolution authorizing the disposal of a vehicle by internet auction with GovDeals Incorporated. Summied.
Second.
Discussion. Call call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Resolution passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Soil and Water Conservation District, Resolution 2024-04.23.z. A resolution of support of property for the Clean Ohio Local Agriculture Easement Purchase Program with the Ohio Department of Agriculture. Summied.
Second.
Discussion.
So these are properties that we are putting forth for consideration with the Ohio Department of Agriculture. This follows the MOU that we had placed last week. So we need to hear back from the Ohio Department of Agriculture regarding these properties, and then we'll take further steps to solidify that.
These properties will be subject to the agreement that would allow for past reasons. Thank you, Mr. President.
Additional discussion.
Call ball please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Resolution passes three zero. From Fairfield County Utilities Department, Resolution 2024-04.23.a.a. A resolution to approve the selection and sign the agreement for professional geotechnical services with Bennett and Williams Environmental Consultants for the water resource expertise.
From Fairfield County Utilities, move items A, A, B, B, C, C, D, D, E, E, F, F, G, G, and H, H.
Second.
Discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Resolutions pass three zero. For the payment of bills, Resolution 2024-04.23.i.i. A resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners approval. Summied.
Second.
Discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Resolution passes three zero.
Even the executive session, Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll make the motions that the commission will enter executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel issues. Not session, I would like to have the commissioners, clerks, and administrator, deputy county administrator. Part in sheriff, in prosecutor's office, outside of county.
Second.
Fix? Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovey? Executive session.